Welcome everyone here today. Thank you for taking the time out and being here today. Our purpose today is to continue with the EAW process. And today, our meeting is to determine if an EIS is required for the EAW submitted by MPM. The purpose of the EAW comments and comment responses is to provide the record in which the RGU, which is a board in the County Board of Commissioners, can base a decision about whether an EIS needs to be prepared for a project. The EIS needs to describe in the rules, an EIS shall be ordered for projects that have a potential for significant environmental effects. In deciding whether a project has the potential for significant environmental effects, the RGU shall compare the impacts that may reasonably be expected to occur from the project with the criteria in this rule. And we will consider the following factors. A, the type, extent, and reversibility of environmental effects. This deals with the nature and significance of the environmental effects that will or could result from the project. It relies directly on the EAW information and may be augmented by information from comments and responses which we received. B, cumulative potential effects, which cumulative potential effects of related or anticipated further projects. C, the extent to which environmental effects are subject to mitigation by ongoing public regulatory authority, provided that the RGU may rely only on mitigation measures that are specific and can reasonably be expected to be effective. This frequently is the main justification for why an EIS is not required. Projects often have impacts that could be significant, if not for permit conditions and other aspects of public regulatory authority. And D, the extent to which environmental effects can be anticipated and controlled as a result of other available environmental studies undertaken by public agencies or the project proposal, including other EISs. This enters in only where the same information that would be sought is in an EIS already. So in this case, it will be if a similar mine had done an EIS and we could take that information and apply it here. The decision of the RGU can be appealed. The decision of the RGU whether to prepare an EIS can be appealed in the State Court of Appeals. The appeal must be filed within 30 days of the date on the appealing party receives the final decision and order of the RGU. There's no administrative appeal of the RGU. The Environmental Quality Board, the EQB, has no jurisdiction to review an RGU decision. And the, right now, the date that this will be decided by the county board is April 15th. So that would be the date the 30 days would start at. So I guess I'd ask if there's any questions on the process at this point? Otherwise, as is customary at our meetings, everyone in the room will introduce themselves. And I will start. Phil Harder on the Planning Commission.
Heidi Hansen, Planning Commission.
Mike Augen, Planning Commission.
Tom Applecock, Commission. I'm sure in on the Planning, Commissioner.
I'm Josh Bass on the Planning Commission.
Lindsay Cartwright, Cottonwood County Planning Commission.
Al Sholz, Planning and Zoning.
Andrew Moody, Codmo SWCD.
Kevin Walsh, Landowner.
Cody Walsh, Landowner.
Chad Phillips, Minnesota paving.
Mike Line, Minnesota paving.
Mark Butler, MPM.
Nick McCabe, ISG.
Michaela Harder, Minnesota Historical Society.
David Breedy, Minnesota Historical Society.
Jennifer Rankin, Minnesota Historical Society.
Matt Rodemacher, Minnesota Historical Society.
Larry Anderson, Cottonwood County Commissioner.
Kevin Stevens, Cottonwood Commissioner.
Jesse Redd, Lower Sioux Citizen.
Kevin O'Keefe, Lower Sioux.
Al Sanders, Red Rock Ridge Research Group.
Dick Calhoun, Landowner.
All right. Thank you all for being here today. And I think this is also a Teams open meeting, so there are some people, I believe electronically.
That'd be David Mather and Drew Brockman.
Okay. Thank you all for being here today. As we get into the meeting, this is a open meeting of the Planning Commission. It is not a public hearing. The public hearing has previously been held. So all comments that were previously brought at the public hearing are included in the decision-making of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has decided that we will allow public comments today at the beginning of the meeting to address the process, any concerns you might have. But the comments you make today will not affect the decision of the Planning Commission as that period has closed. The public comment period today will allow two minutes for comments if you'd like to make comments. So with that, I will open the public comment period and ask if anyone would like to speak
Thanks for MHS, who would like to speak, but also kind of point out, and I can provide this documentation, but just pointing out, for Jeffers Petreliff's, this is a state historic site. That is under the Minnesota Historic Sites Act. And I just want to make sure this kind of gets pointed out too, that it's listed under the historic sites. And there is a duty by local government to ensure the protection, not only below ground, but above ground as well too. So I can circulate this document if you guys will accept this document. But just noting that under 665, there is a responsibility by the county to ensure the protection of the state historic site.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jeffers?
That'll be it.
Okay, thank you. There's one hand raised on my line here. I believe we can hear him.
Drew Brockman. Hear ya?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Drew Brockman. I'm with the Upper Sioux Community Tribal Historic Preservation Office. And I'd just like to take this moment just to reiterate the fact that this is the act of cultural landscape that is still utilized by our people for cultural and spiritual needs. And the impacts of this has, the impacts of this quarry have negative impacts to that spiritual and cultural connection our people have with the as above and so below of the landscape there. And then I just want to press the urgency to do the hard rights in this decision-making process. Thank you.
Kevin?
Kevin O'Keefe, just like the next statement, I held back my public comment period statement that day because of the board bringing up the fact that you, I was convinced you guys were going to require an EIS. That has not happened. It was told that we need to go back to the table, have conversations, you know, some of these meetings were canceled. And it felt like we were talked bad instead of talked with. And I just wanted to say that too. I did not feel as though that that was any kind of a mutual conversation to work through some of those questions to give you guys answers to better, give you better clarity to help you understand the importance of protecting this site. So I just, I appreciate what you guys do. I really just hope we can all have open hearts and minds and be open minded to understanding of other people's positions on this. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'd like to make a comment. I'm Kevin Walsh. We own the land where they're trying to do this. And we've been farming this. My wife's father's been farming this since 1965. And there's been more, there's no rock above or anything where we're going to do this project. And my wife keeps on, she works with David many times. And they're got a good relationship. And she is, she believes in this culture to, she does not want to harm anything either. So if there was by far anything there, we would not do it. We're just trying to survive and farming. This is the way we do it. So, thank you.
Just want to make sure everyone has an opportunity, so.
David Mather wants to talk. Go ahead, David. Okay, thanks, everybody. Yeah, I'm David Mather from the State Historic Preservation Office. I just wanted to mention that our office is sending a letter that should arrive shortly. But briefly, the, what it states is that the county does have responsibilities under Minnesota Statute 138.665, which is the Historic Sites Act, responsibility to protect the historic character and physical features of the Jeffers Petreliff Site, which is in the State Historic Site Network and listed in the National Register of Historic Places. In our letter, we also reiterated our statements from previous meetings. We agree with others who have commented on the project that more archaeological survey does need to be done in the proposed expansion area, in our opinion, if the project is to go forward.
Anyone else that would like to make a public comment?
I don't know whether this is procedure, but I will mention this. It's something that I hope procedures processes through. And that is the amount of water that's being taken out of Little Cottonwood River. Very concerned about that. And I did visit the Boiling Spring, which is a sacred site, and it no longer runs, it's dry trickle. It's no longer doing its, what it's supposed to be doing. And local landowners, Dick Calhoun, has noticed that the springs are not flowing. I'm working with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and we're going to start monitoring those springs. However, we, I have monitored that spring since 1998. And it's dried up since the water of the mountains being taken out of. What's being taken out of the drainage, but two quarries, particularly the water that's being pumped out to Lamerton to the ethanol plant is affecting Little Cottonwood. Little Cottonwood is already sort of a hot river, is what the biologists are telling me. And pulling more of that spring water out of there is going to freeze the temperature of Little Cottonwood, could affect fish and wildlife there. So I'm hoping that's part of this procedure, that that's, that's considered, that that is an effect. And we are going to start monitoring that with all kinds of different agencies at this point. The DNR, the TNC, the Nature Conservancy, the Minnesota Land Trust, we're all working over preservation of Red Rock Bridge. We're very concerned about the effects of the quarry. And also keep in mind the effects of the dirt. If that is a problem, I, I'm really concerned about the employees and visitors. I've worked there, I know what it's like. Please consider that in your consideration. And I know you've made decisions already, but I know the commission, who can hear that too. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Yes, pick.
I'm a landowner, Dick Calhoun. The Little Cottonwood River runs through my property less than half a mile from the quarry site. And I've watched that little river run for 75 years. I grew up out there. I left for a while, came back. And it, over the last several years, it's taken a noticeable, there's been a noticeable decline in the, in the running of the Little Cottonwood River. There are seven, not counting the boiling springs, there are seven different springs in a half a mile area there. None of them are running anymore. I believe that has to do with the water that's being pumped out. And the EAW that was done by the ethanol plant, when they did it, really doesn't fit with what's going on having to look at. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I also have, I don't know if this is pertinent or not to this, this is the first meeting I've attended having to do this. The dust coming out of the Red Rock Quarry is, I don't know if anybody, any study has been done on that and how harmful that is to the environment and, and humans and animals. But we have some CRP four miles away from the quarry that we have elected not to hunt at three times of the year because we won't take our dogs in there because of the dust hanging on the, and I gotta believe that's detrimental to anything and everybody. But I don't know that a study has been done on that. And the Petreliff's area, that our land abuts that. And it's, it is the same way. A heavy coating of red dust.
Thank you.
I have one more comment about procedure. The procedure that we have in the extra meetings with ISG, I feel like those, it was kind of what Kevin said. I felt like those meetings were more meetings just to say that they met with us. There were few guys were not reporting back about what we said in those meetings.
No, are you talking about meetings not with this committee?
Not with groups. Just for the procedure, I know that's not part of it, but just realize that they are reporting back to, yes, we met with them. But they're not reporting back what was said. And that I don't think is, that's misleading to you guys because we, our concerns were expressed. We had multiple concerns that you guys never, ever heard that we talked about. And I really feel like those meetings were, yeah, we, we met with, we made claims, they made claims of meeting with the Lower Sioux community, where you weren't community members at those meetings, but they really weren't meeting. Understand that's a concern, a procedure for the future.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, then I will close the meeting for public comment. And this time I would ask the Planning Commission, if anyone would like to review the findings they came up with over the last couple months, review the EAW.
Did find it interesting that with the two's archaeological study of the area, that they were approved by the State Historic Preservation Office, yet after they completed it, there was doubts of their study. And I felt like their study was thorough. I felt like they dug to what depth they needed to. And upon finding the artifact on site, they dug even further in areas in that area and didn't find anything further. I thought that was representative of that site.
Mr. Chair? Yes? Any comments? It's been more hours reading all the documents, I guess, than probably ever have. But if any issue, we start out with 51 pages of guidelines on how to do an EAW. We did delve into those the last couple days, kind of start with that. What was 68 page, I thought also was a very comprehensive EAW by a very reputable firm. You had to spend some time going through and looking at their resume, looked at all the things that are being done out there. 195 shovel tests, seriously. So I guess I thought that was, was good. I know there's a lot of debate on all these pieces, these moving pieces are there. Eight foot approximately cover of a glacial till. Has that always been there or not been there? Has there been deposition over the last, how many thousand years? Somebody's farmed it for as long as they have and they haven't found anything. Remember as a youngster, bonding rocks that you knew were something of historic value. And so I thought it was, I thought it was well done. The responses to a lot of the questions were responded to, a lot of different factors. So it's an expansion, it's not a new one. So I'm assuming this is still governed by the conditions that are on the original interim, formerly CUP, use permit. So there's, there's methods and things in place to deal with some of these concerns. If the mining operation is not following those, then we as a board or this complaining commission will need to take some action in the future. I mean, it is an interim use permit, it's not, doesn't go on forever. So if there is some lack of dust control, if there's some other issues out there that aren't being followed, then we need to be, we need to make sure that we also take action on it, moving down the road. Yeah, I guess that's where it is. I mean, I keep looking at this archaeological stage one, and there's a stage two, and there's an EIS. I mean, whether you agree with what's going on here or not, I think the base requirements have been met. Go ahead and approve this as being sufficient, as a sufficient EAW. And I'm sure we could spend hours, and we already have. We've got lots of information, lots of pages of documents. You read one thing and then you go back and read something else, and it's kind of like, okay, they're saying this, this is saying this. What's the real situation? So it is challenging, but I think at this level for essentially a ten acre expansion on existing, that's already governed by existing conditions, yeah, I think it's sufficient. I'm not going to say it's fantastically sufficient, but I believe it's sufficient. If a question comes up, how far do you go? What more do you do? Do you dig down deeper in 50 spots? Do you put in more dust control? Do you, it's kind of a long continuum of what you could do.
Those things can be done through public hearings for conditionally used permits or interim permits from here on out. As far as the expansion needs to be approved yet by the Planning Commission or with this EAW, we can adjust the conditions and make them more or less strict than they already are. And more or less detailed than they already are. So just to kind of go off of what you were saying right there, that would be the, that would be the, that would be the option we would go to in the event that this is sufficient. Doesn't require an EIS.
Most conditions would be adjusted before the renewal of the permit currently operating under?
Before the expansion approval, or the, excuse me, the expansion is approved. Back in 2023, this was, this conditionally used permit was stopped by the petition for an EAW. And the, so it was held in limbo until the EAW was done. And once the EAW is done, and it's proven, and it's proven to be either sufficient or requiring EIS, after that's all done, then they go, we go back to their expansion request. And we, we have a public hearing and we review that. And we can approve, approve it based off of the EAW slash EIS. And then we can adjust our conditions as such on that.
Well, eventually, whenever this plays out, eventually we can, we are, do have to put additional conditions on just the expansion portion.
Just the expansion and then the, also the
Tell your operation.
Operation is a Yeah, I think that's a year and a half, an hour or so.
That's a, I have a question. I know you were looking into better dust control. Is that, is that still ongoing process?
Definitely. It's, it's in the works. It's a big capital project for us. We're waiting on final approval here, but I mean, for the, for the upcoming season, as we get started here, we're going to better utilize the water suppressant stuff that we currently have in place with hopes of by June, July, Mike, you think?
Yeah.
Having some of this real, real time technology in place out there, so.
Dust monitoring, dust monitoring at each location of the facility, that we can track that in real time.
And that notify you if it was, of course, getting work limits or whatever, because typically it's non-working hours too.
Right. And that's what we want to get a handle on is, we got, we got dust coming from farm fields. I mean, I've been out, out there where it's coming, blowing off the farm fields. So with this technology that we're going to have in place there, we're going to be able to pinpoint, you know, where, where is it really coming from? And address it.
And allows us, as we make changes, we can see the impact.
I think the biggest thing in the, as far as the next step, I mean, I don't want to get too far into it, but you know, we will have to, we will have to follow, we will have to be more strict on this quarry than we are, just because they're with other quarries, just because of how close they are to this historic property. Following this statute that was given us, given to us today, we'll have to be, we'll have to adjust our conditions as such. But that's more down the line. Today's just on the EAW, so.
After hours and hours of reading all this, I have the same conclusion. It feels sufficient in what I've been reading and studying on this.
I think it seems to me that there's a lot of entities that are coming into this, this EAW, and the need for an EIS. It's not just one item that we're looking at here. It's a bunch of different items that we're looking at the historic site. And that's one area that we have to look at. Are we going to affect that historic site? Is there going to be work done to make that historic site examined closer? I don't know if that's going to happen or not. Obviously, the dust control issue, but there's so many things that affect dust control. It's not just the quarry that's affecting.
The quarry that's affecting dust at the site. It's. Gravel roads. Are affecting the dust control. But there, there's many different. Entities to this whole issue. I heard the water issue is, is a big one. That we have to take into consideration. Whether that water is. Environmental and specifically environmental, or is it being caused by the? The site. Is that what's causing the water to go away? So there's so many different things that are coming at us here. And all those things have to be considered. So. That to me is what. I'm looking at whether this EAW is sufficient or not. And I'm not completely sure if it's sufficient or if it's not sufficient. So. I'm going to need to do more. Intense reading on that.
I will say to kick off, when's these comments of all the items, I'll call them, have brought up and concerns expressed. How many of those and which ones do fall within the scope? Of what's required by statute for a phase one archaeological study? I mean, I, I know everybody's a little emotional about this, but. Yeah, I think there's some things that are being thrown in there that, yep, we all have feelings, strong feelings about some of these things, but. Are they part of the findings? Are they part of the facts? Do we have answers to them? Pretty sure there's a few of those that we don't. It's more of a. Be concerned, it's more of an emotional discussion than, yep, this is absolutely true, this is the finding. These are facts, so that's. And that's. That topic to sort out, and so. I would, I would agree with you on that. And I don't know, Alex, I mean, there's not a manual here that says you got to consider this, this and this. I mean, we're broad terms, so it's like. How are we going to know? I mean.
Try to.
I can sit here and argue the natural weathering of the red rock. Take you to a cemetery and look at old tombstones and say, see, what happens? Exposed rock and tombstones in the center. It's natural weathering, so how are you going to decide if it's? National weathering, natural weathering or? Part of that. That's. Problem we probably have on this, but.
I think. A lot of those things. With or without this expansion. Um, is it going to be? Affected the same way? It's a question you have to ask yourself. As far as this, just this expansion goes.
Correct.
Will, will there be more dust? Will there be more water? I won't say water usage, but effects on water. To that, we, we, we kind of tend to lean on our state departments. The DNR especially as far as water goes. And. We, we check, we try to. Try to strengthen the conditions as far as dust goes, but. Will, yeah, will it? Will it affect? Will this expansion affect? And make more of these. These effects on petroglyphs.
That's a question I guess, I don't know how you would ever answer it. And will this accelerate the weather, natural weathering process? You're right in the DNR, I mean, I. Is, I mean, they're the water folk, so to speak.
They are.
Not necessarily us.
Does anyone know the hydrology of the high water ethanol, are they staying within their? Allocated water limits? Do you know?
The. I can pretty much guarantee that. I don't want to speak out of turn, but yeah, I'm pretty sure they are.
Yeah, the DNR would, the DNR would be the ones to be. Asked that question and they, and they have commented on this EAW, they're aware of the CAW. So they, they have, they have that kind of deal.
I mean, we have meters and, and these pipes to show what was like cottonwood, what the high water ethanol has. I think we get a weekly report on how much water they use. Once, once a month, we take water samples then to the state lab. And we're, it's pretty heavily regulated. And the, you know, back to the water issues, the reason that we, we felt going to the north. On the expansion was because it would allow us not to go deeper and get into, to the water where. You know, we're going to have to pump. Quite a bit, I mean, we're, we're considerably under our, what we pump to the river. Right now. Last year was kind of different because of the floods. So, you know, generally without the major rain events and stuff, we're. We have a long ways, most of the water that's used gets pumped to the ethanol, so it's more of a recycle program.
Every farmer longer, it's time every fifty. That's what the law burns.
According to the DNR comment. The DNR must certify that there's no impact on the wetland containing areas fans, which is about one point eight miles away from the site. This is farther, this expansion would be farther away from the calcareous. But the biggest thing in this comment is that the DNR has to approve. Any kind of project that would, that would potentially impact this. So they would have, the NPM would have to go through the approval of the DNR as well, as far as water issues go.
On your comment, I would, I would consider the argument that just because the. The expansion is further from the river, doesn't mean that it doesn't affect the river more because water doesn't. Or just run a straight line, you know.
Correct.
It, it could, it could have more impact than if they were right next to the river possibly, you know, so.
I, I, and I don't think that's a finding. I think, yeah, that's just.
It's just, it's just something.
Just observation.
Just because they say it's further from the river, doesn't mean it doesn't have as much or more impact.
Correct, yeah. It could have just as much impact.
Right.
This groundwater is different than normal streams. But I would say that I would, I would suggest that one of our findings would be that the DNR does have. The ability to approve and deny these, this project as well. They have to work directly with you.
As I, um, like, like Tom, the rest of the, the year I spent. Probably more hours on, on this study and this than, than I have on any of our. On the, I don't know what, how long I've been on this committee, twenty years or something like that. And by far more hours on this, just this, this week, I'm sure I've spent twenty hours just the last couple of days. And when we look at the EAW, it's on the expansion. But. It does also affect the operation of the entire quarry, which was made for in the comments, but I went through. And in my kind of research, I'm going to just go reach through some of the, some of the, I'm not. Some of the comments and questions that were asked. During the EAW process were similar in nature, so I'm not, you know, the, the. The response from ISG went through every, every question from every comment that was asked of the EAW. Some, some were similar. The answers in those that were similar had similar answers in the response from ISG. But the ones that I'm, I'm going to highlight some that I thought were most relevant. I'm going to start with the, the INSETU. Their comments on. The comments from the phase one study. That, that was done, and this was part of the, the ISG, ISG response. The seventy-eight page document, if you're familiar, if you look through the, the PDFs. There was a seventy-eight page document. So that's what these were from INSETU. On the INSETU document dated March twelfth. That was part of that response. In the, in the seventy-eight page document, it's on page forty-six. INSETU recommended in the report that due to the sensitive nature of the region and nearby Jeffers Petroglyph site. To have further studies completed to assess if there are any adverse indirect effects. To the Jeffers Petroglyph site. And other resources that may come from the operation of the quarry. And the initial recommended studies included visual impact, noise and dust, windblown sediment assessments. However, at the time of the original phase one assessment, these tasks regarding the. Assessment of indirect effects were outside of the established scope, scope of work for the project. So the, the phase one study they did. This wasn't supposed to be included, they're, they're just saying they, they, that further study should be, be included. At this time, it is understood that the project developer is handling these studies and assessments. However, if requested or needed, INSETU may assist, so. The, the developer, project developer said there, we're going to do more studies. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what INSETU has, has responded. And then on the following page eight, which is forty-seven of the seventy-eight page document. However, if it is determined that additional archaeological work is needed for the project, attachment D contains proposed. Now work plan for the potential additional. Archaeological assessment, which incorporates the comments from various parties. In addition, whether or not an additional phase one work is completed and the project is approved due to. Uh, to proceed due to the sensitive nature of the area. INSETU recommends the development and approval of an inadvertent discovery plan. And to have archaeological and tribal monitors present during ground disturbing activities during the construction or removal of the soils. Overline the better out for the proposed undertaking. So. To me that. You know, there's been a request. The proposer said they, they were, they were going to be doing additional studies. The request is an inadvertent discovery plan, which is on page five sixty-six of the seventy-eight page document. And that states whether or not. Phase one archaeological is completed and the project is approved to proceed due to the sensitive nature of the area. INSETU recommends. The development and approval of an inadvertent discovery plan and to have an. Archaeological and tribal monitors present during ground disturbing activities, so. That's, that's from INSETU. This is also from INSETU in response to. The, the original, this is their letter dated August twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. For the SHIP-O twenty twenty-four double oh seventy-four investigation. And they state while the Jeffers Petroglyph site is not within the proposed project area. The indirect effects of the operation of the quarry of the Jeffers, to the Jeffers Petroglyphs should be considered. As there may be an indirect effect on the integrity of this site from the operation of the proposed quarry expansion. Factors of visual impact, noise and dust, windblown sediment to the site from the quarry should be considered. Therefore, INSETU recommended further studies to be completed to assess if there are any adverse indirect effects to the Jeffers Petroglyph site from the. Operation of the quarry. Regarding the phase one archaeological survey completed for the project, it was recommended by multiple parties that there needs to be additional details regarding the cultural history of the area in the report. Additional details regarding the nearby archaeological resources in the report and additional phase one survey to obtain a. Clear understanding of the vertical extents of the soils and quartzite bedrock within the project area. It deemed to be necessary, the goal of this additional phase one. Assessment is to incorporate the comments and recommendations from various groups to identify the presence. Or absence of archaeological resources within the project area. A question I would have would be. Could this be a condition that these additional reports would be required?
Potentially.
You know?
If the planning commission were to agree upon those conditions.
Right. I mean, if, if. It's been recommended by several that. Further studies possibly a, a second phase one, which I suppose is a little more in-depth would be required. That could be a condition.
Same like a phase two.
Well, they, they called it a, a second phase one study, I'm, I'm not sure. It is probably, it's probably how deep the study, you know, what, what in-depthness it goes to, but. Then there's information from SHIP-O that was included with the. Within the EAW, dated January eighth, twenty twenty-four. This was from SHIP-O directed to Nick for, for ISG. We are concerned that significant sites will be damaged or destroyed if the expansion proceeds. In our opinion, an archaeological survey should be completed for the expansion area and tribal consultation. Should occur regarding the proposed quarry operation and expansion. We recommend this because the quarry operation as it currently exists already impacts Jeffers Petroglyphs. Through visual intrusion and through windborne sediment that accelerates lichen growth on the rock face obscuring the images. I know, I know there was some talk already about dust, you know, whether it's gravel dust or, or farm field dust. We have the, the. Quartzite dust and. From some of the readings I've done, I believe the quartzite dust is more damaging to the. To the face of the petroglyphs than just field dust or gravel dust. I don't know if. Tom, do you, do you know just quickly if that's a true statement?
If that's a true statement.
Okay, thank you.
So according to Minnesota's statute four six two point three five nine seven on interim uses. We, the governing. The planning, essentially the planning commission. They have the. They can grant permission of an interim use of property. And also. They agree to any, or they have to, they can go any, any conditions that the governing body deems appropriate for the permission of the use. So what, what, where would be inappropriate for the permission of the use?
So opposed to, you know, additional archaeological study or whatever type of study that we. Might deem necessary?
Correct.
What was the name again, Bill, of the recommended? It was the, of the dig, as they're digging at a, an acronym that was from. SHIP-O.
Inside.
From INSETU, yeah, it was the recommended.
Institute. They recommended. An additional phase one survey to obtain a clear understanding of the vertical extents. Of the soils, so they, they say an additional phase one survey.
Additional.
And might look at different. Might have different parameters than what the, the survey they did had, had parameters. Had parameters for, you know, certain things they were looking for, and this might look at other, other things. Is what I gather.
That's, thank you.
Also from SHIP-O dated, dated February seventh, twenty twenty-five. This was their comments, and then I'm going to read the comments from the ISG response. The common many cultural and historical sites are known to exist in the immediate area of the quarry that holds significance in archaeological and Native American heritage, including the Jeffers Petroglyph Historic Site. As an office tasked with preserving Minnesota's heritage, we are concerned that significant sites will be damaged if the project proceeds. The ISG response, avoidance of the identified archaeological site because we're. They were looking at the. Site, the ten acre site. And the, the question, the question from SHIP-O, I think, went beyond the ten acre site, it was looking at the surrounding areas too. Avoidance of the identified archaeological site will be accomplished by implementing protective buffer to ensure no impact to the resource. It should also be noted that during the initial conversations with agencies, including adjacent landowners and representatives from the Jeffers Petroglyph site. The decision was agreed upon to expand the minefield in, north into the agricultural field. And then it went on to say that, you know, they're avoiding going to the, to the south. The south area, but if I, if I recall. When they, when they talked about expanding to the south and they did go to us, uh, one part, there was a study, I believe Tom did a study at that time and they found some archaeological. Findings in the area near the Little Cottonwood River. And at that time, there was an understanding that the, there was one area a little bit further west that they did continue to mine, I think. But the rest of the area, they were, were not going to mine where these, these artifacts were found. So I don't know that they had an option of moving south anyhow. So the statement, you know, their only option was to move north. And then in that same, same letter dated February seventh. And then in that same, same letter dated February seventh, because of the importance of this area, we continue to recommend consultation with Native American tribes who may have a current or ancestral interest in the area of the state. We recommend this because the quarry operation, as it currently exists, already impacts the Jeffers Petroglyph site through visual intrusion and noise, as well as windborne sediments that accelerate lichen growth on the rock face, obscuring the petroglyph images. And the response from ISG, the recommendation to pursue consultation with Native American tribes who may have an interest in this area, and this is the part I have trouble with, will be taken into consideration as the project moves forward. What does taken into consideration mean? I just wonder what that means. You might do it, you might not. That's what I, that's how I understand taken into consideration to mean. And through this whole process, we've stressed to the quarry that you consult, you interact, you have conversations with the Native American community. And from the reports I heard today, that's not happening in an open dialogue. They feel like you've just kind of told them what you're going to do and they just, you know, have to take it as is. And then the statements that ISG responds with are, we'll take it into consideration. We might consider talking to them, but if we don't feel like it, we won't. That's how I read that, when you say, and this wasn't the only spot it was listed. Whenever a comment came up about meeting with tribal members, we'll take it into consideration, instead of we will meet with those interested parties. That's what, that's how I feel the answer should be stated in this EAW. SHIPO goes on in a letter dated October third, two thousand and twenty-four. This was a letter in the INSETU response. We have reviewed and submitted, we have reviewed the submitted report. This is from SHIPO, the Phase One Cultural Resource Investigation of the Sioux Rock Quarry, two thousand and twenty-four dash double oh seven seventy-four. The reported methods of the Phase One survey meet the applicable guidelines and standards set forth in the SHIPO manual for archaeological projects in Minnesota. And then it goes on to state, we agree that more study is needed to assess potential indirect effects of the proposed project on Jeffers Petroglyphs. Such indirect effects include, but are not limited to airborne sediments, visual obstruction, and increased noise. Because of the importance of this area, we recommend consultation with Native American tribes who may have a current or ancestral interest in the area of the state. So that was SHIPO's response to the INSETU response. That was, that was information I gleaned from SHIPO. From the Office of the State Archaeologists, the OSA recommends consultation with Minnesota Indian Affairs Council and tribal communities within, with an expressed interest in the area. And the ISG response, the recommendation to pursue consultation with Native American tribes who may have an interest in this area will be taken into consideration as the project moves forward. From the Minnesota DNR, in a letter dated February third, two thousand and twenty-five, and we talked about some of this already with the DNR and the water, and this might answer some of the questions that were proposed during the comment period. The DNR Water Appropriation Permit number nineteen ninety dash forty-two seventy-four authorizes only quarry dewatering. The EAW referenced other water uses, including dust control and sand and gravel or aggregate washing. Water use has also been highly variable through the years prior to two thousand and twenty-five and has, with the DNR permission, exceeded the authorized volume. A permit amendment is most likely needed at this time. And the response from ISG, the proposal will work with the DNR to amend the permit if needed. So it sounds like you have used more water at times, but you talked to the DNR and they said, you know, we understand what's going on. So, you know, they worked with you and going forward, they might want to review the permit and you talked about.
Most of that is when the Cottonwood River flooded and it came into the quarry that we have to discharge more water. Was it that we were pumping water?
But you worked with the DNR through that process.
Correct. Yeah.
Right. And that's what, that's what was stated here. The Dalton Twenty Calcareous Bend is located approximately one point eight miles south of the southern boundary of the quarry and two point three miles south of the expansion area. Bends are a rare and legally protected wetland type and under Minnesota statute, under Minnesota statute one oh three G dot two two three. Coordination with the DNR is required. The DNR Commissioner must approve any project that has the potential to impact a calcareous bend. So from what I understand, that, that wasn't, that was just part of the DNR's comment that moving forward, this, this expansion has to be approved by the DNR? Is that what you guys understand it? Because it could have an impact on the bend? So you're working with the DNR, I'm assuming, to get their permits to prove along this? Or? But on the expansion?
There's no pumping or anything from the expansion area?
Right, but, but the, 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 the DNR said that they must approve the project because of the potential impact it could have on the calcareous bend. But you're not working with the DNR at this time on the potential impact of this on the bend?
What Alex mentioned earlier about it being farther away than required for, I'm not aware of.
No, it's not, that's not a requirement. The DNR said you guys have to work with them to approve this project through the DNR.
But it won't impact the calcareous bend?
Yeah, they need, they need to go through this with you as well. That's what their comment for the EAW was. It doesn't matter. It's within the certain radius of the calcareous bend. So it's going to potentially affect it. So they need to, they need to be involved.
Not aware of a calcareous bend permit with the DNR. I think it's just a kind of acknowledgement that they know what's going on.
Yeah, I think those conversations would be had as part of addressing the water appropriations permit information with them. This mostly, calcareous bends are groundwater fed wetlands that are, so that's what they're concerned about is the, the pumping, making sure the expansion isn't pumping more. Those kinds of conversations. So it's part of that water appropriations permit process where that conversation would happen.
Great. The comment that the DNR made to the, to the EAW was coordination with the DNR is required and the DNR Commissioner must approve any project that has the potential to impact a calcareous bend. So the way I read that, the DNR Commissioner has to approve the project to make sure that it doesn't impact this calcareous bend that is approximately two miles south of the expansion. Continues, adjacent land use is discussed as agricultural land, pasture grass, and an existing mine quarry. This section fails to identify the Jeffers Petroglyph site, state historic site, and associated trails are adjacent east of the quarry. In addition, the EAW fails to mention that the red rock, ridge, prairie, scientific, and natural area and associated trails are located to the north. And the, the ISG response was the proposal will coordinate with DNR as the project moves forward. So it's, it sounds like the, the DNR wants to be involved or they, they have to be involved in the, in this project as it continues to move forward. The project proposers must receive DNR approval for the final project plan and avoidance measures prior to project implementation. So there is a requirement to get DNR approval for the, for the final project plan. Continuing from the DNR letter, products containing calcium or magnesium chloride are often used for dust control. However, chloride products released into the environment do not break down and can accumulate to levels that are toxic to plants and wildlife. Therefore, it is recommended that chemical dust suppressants containing fluoride be avoided. And the response from, the ISG response from the proposer, the recommendation to minimize the use of chemical binders will be taken into consideration when possible as it relates to dust control. And I think Chad, you mentioned that your, your goal is to use only water as much as you can?
And we, when we met with David, we talked about that. And he brought that same point out to us and, you know, you know, moving forward, we make sure we're using something environmental friendly that will not affect the petroglyphs.
Thank you.
As far as the DNR comment goes, I'm going to get in touch with the calcareous bend program coordinator. Well, they have a whole list of people down there. If the calcareous bend program coordinator doesn't get back to me, then I'll get in touch with Katie Wigan to make sure that the DNR is aware and they have approved all the water appropriation permits that are needed.
I mean, I think the
For now, I would say we have to assume that
The comments were from the DNR about the calcareous bend, so.
And we will follow up as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, to that point, I've got some other points to comment back on. But depending on how this goes, what the outcome is here today, there's data is that there'll be an interim, formerly a conditional use permit, interim use permit. We put conditions on that, aren't meaning all other regulatory permits, et cetera. Isn't that, that's a standard required on a conditional slash new interim use permit? I mean, that can head here, whatever, weeks, months, or however long, that would, that would be covered under that.
Let me continue with a letter dated February thirteen, two thousand and twenty-five from Minnesota Historical Society. Adjacent land use is discussed as agricultural land, pasture grass, and an existing mine quarry. This section fails to identify that the Jeffers Petroglyphs, state historic site, and associated trails are adjacent east of the quarry. In addition, the EAW fails to identify that the rock ridge, prairie, SNA, and associated trails are located to the north. And the response from the proposer is the land use described in the EAW included the properties immediately adjoining the project, project area. However, the requirement, the question in the EAW is existing land use of the site as well as areas adjacent to and near the site, including parks and open space, cemeteries, trails, prime, or unique farmlands. Just, just looking at how the EAW is repaired and then a second, a second opportunity to fix the mistake that was made, wasn't, wasn't done. It just, it seemed like the, the EAW, to me, at times, it wasn't, it wasn't a serious endeavor. Because when the, when the question clearly states that you're looking at not just adjoining areas, but and you avoid the most prominent historic and environmentally impactful sites. I wasn't pleased to see how that was disregarded two times. I don't know if you have a comment to make on that, Nick?
Oh, I guess we were just looking at areas immediately adjoining that project boundary, so.
Right. So when the, when the EAW asks that existing lands as well as areas adjacent, including parks, okay, parks, that right way, I would think. You know, even petroglyphs, you know, it's not a park, it's a, it's a state historic site, but you, you could almost consider it a park and the, and the SNA, you know, it's, it, it looks good when you just do the adjoining and it's a farm field and a quarry. It looks, looks pretty good. There's nothing else in the area. Someone who's not familiar with the area and they're looking at the EAW for the first time is going, well, I don't see what the big deal is. There's nothing here. So I think in the future, when you're doing an EAW and it asks a specific broad spectrum question, you'd look at the broad spectrum and not just, and not just make it what suits, seems to suit the proposer's best interest. Continuing in a letter from MNHS, in the archaeological report for the proposed project, in any, in any letter issued by the SHIPO on October third, two thousand and twenty-four, and attached as part of the EAW, the archaeological consultant in SHIPO identified a study is needed to assess potential indirect effects of the proposed project on Jeffers Petroglyph State Historic Site. And such indirect effects include, but are not limited to airborne sediments, visual obstruction, and increased noise. The, the response from ISG for the proposer, the proposed mine expansion was planned to allow the quarry to operate in the same manner as it currently does. The existing quarry and this proposed expansion should not impede the current land use of the Jeffers Petroglyphs when compared to the existing operation. And continuing from that same letter, based on the current EAW and throughout the document, there is limited information on the impacts of the Jeffers Petroglyph State Historic Site and the mitigative strategies being proposed. Current procedures and operations in place at the Sioux Rock Quarry Expansion significantly impact the cultural site and operations. Effects of resolving these matters have largely been ignored. And finally, MNHS strongly recommends that consultation with Minnesota Indian Affairs Council and tribal communities, including tribal historic preservation offices, and this consultation is included in the EAW. The response from ISG and the proposer, the proposer currently follows and will continue to follow an approved dust control plan as a condition of its existing CUP to help reduce or eliminate fugitive dust emissions. If the current plan, okay. So, and if the current plan is deemed, this is my comment, if the current plan is deemed inadequate by Cottonwood County, it will be reviewed when an interim use permit is renewed. So as been stated already several times, you know, if, if dust control is a, a major factor, we'll review that at the time the, the conditions are put on an interim use permit. And then I have a comment from a citizen letter from Charles Peterson dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. The EAW does not adequately address cumulative impacts. There is no discussion of cumulative impacts that includes the existing red rock quarry or the proposed graph quarry, both less than two miles from the projects and between two and two and a half miles from the Jeffers Petroglyphs. And the response from the proposer, as is stated in the AW, this small expansion will operate in a manner consistent with the existing quarry. As such cumulative impacts from the Sioux Rock Quarry and other nearby existing operations in the area are not anticipated to be significant. So those are the comments that kind of were highlighted for me. And as I went through those, I, I, I'm trying to separate the, the expansion from the entire operation because we're looking at the expansion here. And there, there's some, there's some real positives I, I see with the proposed expansion. And looking back over the last couple of years, when, I think when MPM first came to the county, they were looking at a forty-acre expansion. That's what I have in my memory. Might, might have been a twenty, but it was a larger than the ten-acre that we're currently dealing with. And I think that was, that was pared back because of the impact to the area. So that's a positive that at one time they were looking at maybe developing that whole farm field. And now it's back to, was back to ten acres. And I don't know if that was with consulting with, with the neighboring petroglyphs in the tribal community, how that came about, or just realizing that the forty, forty acres probably wasn't feasible. A couple of other things that I know have been stated by the proposer is that with, with this expansion, they're only going to be drawing red rock out of there. They're not going to be processing there. There's not going to be stockpiling there. They're just going to be removing the, the They're just going to be removing the 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 red rock from that area and processing it on their current site. And that processing and stockpiling is going to be moved down into the lower shelves. I don't know how how far down. You know, I know it goes down to one twenty. I'm sure it's not going to be at the one twenty level because that's probably underwater most of the time. But at some some point, it's going to be moved down, which will have a positive. Impact on dust control for the quarry. Moving the moving the piles to a lower level, um assuming that you're not just going to make them taller piles so they're at the same. Same top height they are now, but having that all all lord will also have. Positive impact on dust control. What what I um. What we have to, what we're considering here is there's a cultural, a historic, and environmental impact to the area. And the the historical and cultural impact. I think I think as. For myself, I've probably in the last twenty years have grown to appreciate more the diversity of the cultural and historic. Um, features we have in our area. As I've studied a little bit of the and not very much, um but studied a little bit of the the historical and cultural. History of the petroglyphs. I believe, you know, the. There there's some petroglyphs that are. I think the the newest ones are maybe a hundred fifty years old. But they date back to possibly six to seven to nine thousand years of age. I I wasn't aware of that, you know, twenty years ago. Um, I think this the the pyramids. In Egypt are around three thousand to four thousand years old, so we have. We have historical, significant. And cultural significant site right in our backyard. That is older than than the things we think of as the main the main. Historic and cultural sites in the world. And when I think of the impact of the of. Or the just the historical value of the the pyramids and the. And the Sphinx and and other historic sites around the world, there's there aren't many that have the age that the petroglyphs have. So that so I realized that maybe this has even more impact to our cultural and historic. Belonging. And and then I think why does it have more more historic and cultural, just not just age? But to me, it has even more cultural and historic um significance. Because the petroglyphs and and um the surrounding area affects my neighbors. It affects the members of the Lower Sioux and the other tribal areas that use that as um. From what I understand, it's a it's a highly um. A highly cultural valued area. I don't want to get into anything beyond that, but it has it has very, very high significance. And for us not to protect that. Is would would be on us to have made that mistake. But I also realized that. The the ten acre expansion. Have some benefits because of the changes it makes on your existing processing and. And um. Stockpiling site. Because that's not going to, if we don't do this expansion. You're still going to continue to quarry. You're just going to go deeper. The 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 machinery and the and the stockpiles are going to remain on the on the surface level. And it's going to it's going to continue to impact. The um. The petroglyphs and the area surrounding. I'm not, I'm not pleased with. All the all the things that happened with the with the way the EAW was prepared. I think it was. To me, it was a a minimal. Attempt at the EAW. It it probably does just enough. To 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 answer the questions that were asked. I think we have. We have opportunity going forward to put on conditions. That that will. Have an effect on how the environmental impact of the quarry happens moving forward. If we don't, if 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 the expansion doesn't happen, I I see that the detrimental effects are going to be. Uh, worse than than uh. Then then if we don't allow that little expansion to happen. So that they don't continue to go deeper and continue to have their processing and stockpiling on the surface and. We're we're not, we're not here to shut the quarry down because that's not what this meeting is about, but we're here to try and make. What happens at the quarry. Uh, a better, a better have a have a better environmental impact than it than it currently does. So um. With that, I'm going to let someone else speak a little bit and.
With you, Mr. Chair, I just have some comments on. Three bullet points, I guess, as as I listen to your comments and your explanations. I would tend to agree to you, if if we allow this. The site's going to improve. For various reasons, because we're, I mean, they're not, they're just taking product out. You're going to move it down. They're not going to dig deeper, so. Allow this, there will be some improvements on this, but just so everybody in the room understands that this is. Ten acres that we're just going to, I'll say, you'll say mine, I'll say harvest, wherever, we're going to harvest. The red rock and then take it into the quarry for for the processing. At the same time, you're not going to be processing more red rock from within the existing quarry. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
I mean, you're not, so we're not, I guess I'm looking at, I'm looking at, okay, here's how it is now. Here's what it'll look like down the road. It's going to get better. It's not going to be more detrimental. So this is an expansion. This isn't, we're putting in more equipment. We aren't getting bigger. We're just taking another.
And and I think not to get. You know, get ahead, but get ahead of ourselves. There still has to be the studies that the DNR will do and others will do on. Effective water and those things before it happens, so. You know, if there is, if there's something major that's happening underground that we don't see. It could change the whole thing, but we're we're going on what we know today.
Correct. I could guarantee you that they're not going to be underregulated with with the DNR and the water and. Calcarious-Fenn and all the other concerns we've had um to do this. The one thing that that is a struggle for me and and. Also, you talked about tribal partners, tribal relations, having meetings. Yeah, I don't know how we can say send judgment or evaluate that. Because now we're into feelings and I have meetings all the time and. Some people don't like the meetings I have with them and some say, wonderful, glad you stopped in. And that that's kind of subjective, so I'm. It kind of is what it is. I know they're going to say, yep, we met three times. I wasn't there. I don't know if that was like, yep. Protect the box that we met versus let's have sincere discussions about the site and the features that you've talked about at the site. One thing that still concerns me, depending upon where this goes, and if there are conditions put on. On the continuum of, hey, we've done a phase one archaeological, whether instituted the bare minimums. Just to meet the requirements in law, whether we like it or not, or we feel that it wasn't overly complete. We've gone to that. So we had mentioned in our another archaeological study, what are the benchmarks? What are the standards? What are the outcomes? You know, what does that look like? We have to dig thirty holes, twenty feet deep. I mean, I. Like, the reason I'm asking, because whatever we do, if something else is done, another archaeological study or a redo of phase one. Or a phase two, you got all these terms that I have no idea what's included in all these. Uh, I'm assuming they're a little less than a full blown EIS, but I don't know. What are the benchmarks that say we have to do this, this, and this? So I just get nervous that we need to be able to answer those questions. Assuming whatever happens down the road. Uh, I do believe, and I don't know, some of you guys can probably tell me, I do believe when you excavate, if you find something, uh, you need to cease operations immediately and. Notify the historical society. I mean. Pretty sure they don't want to say get caught is the word, but I would hope that they will maintain that integrity, go ahead and do that, but. Depending, again, where this goes, uh, to have other folks on site. I guess we'll have to talk about liability and all. I don't know if that can be a condition or not. So. Those are just some actual thoughts I had is if we do put other conditions. What are they? What level are they? How many do-overs are we going to have to do?
Yeah. I think, you know, to put conditions on operations, things you can see that, you know, you can, okay, dust, okay, we can see that. Hot water effect, we can put a condition on that because we can see it and we can tangibly work with that. But when we're talking about some of the things that you just mentioned.
Yeah.
It's it's a little harder to put a condition on things that are a little more vague and. That might need some research. All I have for questions.
Can.
Go ahead.
Do you have anything else you wanted to add, Mike?
I compare with you guys, I mean, we're not off to destroy ancient history or, but we got to move on. Progress.
Hey? Any else to add?
I didn't like your points, Bill. I thought you covered things adequately. I'm good.
Um, I went through kind of listening to. Everything everyone had to say. Uh, I I came up with ten findings. Um, if you guys all would like to see them as well, you can, it's if you go back. It'll be in that area. Um, in that folder under April third.
They're all emailed.
Oh, yeah, you can't.
I'm the eyeball.
Well, I'll I'll read them out loud. Don't you worry about it.
Okay, then we're good.
All right. But I ca I did come up with uh ten of them. Um, and I could just. Kind of go over them and hopefully, and if you guys disagree with me, we can maybe change them. Um, and the these can also be changed by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, or, excuse me, not changed by the Board of Commissioners. They can be added on. A Board of Commissioners can add on to them as well.
We can add conditions, but.
No, no, not conditions, findings, just findings of fact.
Findings.
Yeah, if if the Board of Commissioners also has any facts that they would. Um, think that would um go in favor of whatever you or the Board of Commissioners decides on.
Okay, so I want for a clarification. I mean, we said our next commissioner's meeting is the fifteenth.
Correct.
Do we have to make a decision that day?
Yes.
We do. I'm 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 not up on what the time guideline is on here, so we would need to stay within the legal. Guidelines with the number of days we would need to make it.
Yes, make it, you know, do we need to make a decision by the fifteenth?
Okay.
Um, it is recommended to follow the. Planning Commission's judgments.
Historically, we do, but.
Then just.
While we.
It's it's just good that, you know, said that out loud, but. Um, I'll just go into the findings of fact as as far as um the ten findings that I found. While listening to the comments, um, and if we can add, if you want to add any, track any, that's up to you. Um, the first one is the phase one study was approved by the State Archaeological Historical Society. That uh, these are all, these are all what I what I consider would be facts, um, uh, objective, not subjective. Uh, two of the conditions of the permit must be followed. Whether that be conditional use or interim permit, the conditions of the permit must be followed. Uh, three, the base requirements have been met. The base requirements meaning um base requirement of the EAW. Their minimum have been met. Make sure this is of the EAW.
The first one, it just the the it's SHPO. You you've got, you've got this generally this the State Historical Preservation Office. You know, you you got the right idea there, but we want to make sure we have the right, yeah, State Historic Preservation Office.
Yep.
So you got archaeological, you got to take that out and put historic.
Historical preservation.
HPO.
Yes, yes. Preservation. Um, it'll also change DNR and Department of Natural Resources as well, um, but. As far, uh, number four, dust control can be strengthened through conditions of the permit of any permit or expansion permit. Any interim permit. Or expansion permit. These interim permits have to be. Renewed every five years. So we have to have a meeting every single five years to renew this permit. The DNR has the ability to deny or approve any project that has the potential to affect Calcarious-Fenn. That's the fact that that was commented from the DNR. To in regards to the CAW. Um, MPM must work with the DNR. That was also a fact that was from the DNR comments. The only option that the only option to expand that the MPM has was to go north, and that's what they did. That was the fact that I I came up with for them. A permit amendment for water usage is needed and the DNR is aware of it. Just through the EAW, they are technically aware of it. This is that that that's the fact that came up with their. Um, red rock processing will be on the current site, not the expansion. It's not moving closer to the petroglyphs. Not the expansion. So it's, oops. As as it was discussed. Um, just a little bit ago. Um, and then the products will have smaller process uh processing mounds or the mounds that.
I don't know if we know that for sure. That they'll have smaller mounds.
That.
Stockpiles.
You can, I guess we can ask them to make sure.
I know the the stockpiles, you're moving them lower. Will they be the same size they are now? Or they, you you have the area to have them that size?
Should, I'll say the product, the product will be on lower elevations. Yeah, the product amounts will be on lower.
Process. Or is the process thing currently lower already or not?
A portion of it is.
But. Your your plan is to move all of it to the lower shelf?
Well, that won't.
Eventually, I'm sure.
It's going to take some time to get that opened up, you know. That ten acres opened up to do so, you know.
I don't understand how the ten acres.
Well, I mean, right now, we need, you know, we probably need another fifty feet. We need to blast another fifty feet across that whole ten acres to get enough room to. To get everything down.
It's just too narrow. It's, you start putting building stuff in the bottom, you got the high walls that are eighty feet high. You can't have rocks falling off onto people or your product, so. We need to open that up.
As you as you move closer to the property line, you've got to open that part up is what, is that what you mean? Because you're not moving the processing into the ten acres. You're. You're just having to open up what's basically the the property line now because you've got to stay ten feet away from it. Is that the?
Correct, yeah.
So you just.
Or an agreeable. An agreeable uh distance from the nearest landlord. They can actually go up the line if 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 the landlord wants to.
And I will, I will say, I mean, we've. We've got a lot more down below now this year than we we haven't had in the past. Just with hopes of, you know, this expansion, so.
Moving things down.
Moving things down there, but as we as we open it up a little bit, it'll give us the ability to get more more of it down there.
When you move stockpiles to the lower shelf. And then does that require more moving of the material to get it loaded or not?
No, because we bring the trucks down to the lower.
Oh, that can, that's.
So it's actually better for us.
So you're loading down.
Transport it up to the hill.
Yeah. David?
On the first uh facts, finding, Shimbo is not, doesn't give it. But.
We, we, this has approval in our, and I think.
I mean, yeah, they don't, let me make sure.
It's not an approval, they just.
They, they comment.
They, they comment. State is our, State Historic Preservation Office. Um.
They reviewed this, the report, um, and it met applicable guidelines, so, you know, I.
I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that's what it says instead of.
Typically, Shippo will provide a final determination of effect, which is something like no historic property is affected or no adverse effect. Um, based on the recommendations of the contract, or it's basing the C two. Um, so none of that was included in the Shippo comment letters, a- as well as the fact that continuing studies would. So they are, i- in, but I think they're anticipating more information to come on to make that final determination of effect.
But the, the Shippo, the, the Shippo letter says, we have reviewed the submitted report, the phase one. Um, and the, the reported methods of the phase one survey meet the applicable, applicable guidelines and standards set forth in the Shippo manual. So they're just saying you did the phase one and you met the requirements.
For, for the, the work that was done on the expansion.
Right, right. Right.
That is what's included in the file.
Okay, right.
I think, I think David Mather is online, if he still is.
He is not. No, he said he had another meeting to go to.
He should say he sent the letter, right, in the mail now.
So I changed the first findings of phase one study was met by applicable guidelines by the State Historical Preservation.
Take the was out of there, the phase one study met.
Phase one.
And the by.
Met.
By.
Met of the, and probably.
Take the by.
Yeah. Met applicable guidelines by the State Historical Preservation Office. And it also took out the, the finding, that last, that last finding we were just discussing.
And piles in the elevation?
Yes.
That's too difficult, so.
Right, yeah. I'm not. Um, so these are the find, these are just ten findings, nine findings that I found, is, uh, do you, if you would like to dispute them? You'd like to change them, if you'd like to add on to them? Up to you.
I think, when we put a finding that, um, the, in the, um, the EQV's worksheet for the process, um, of the four criteria, and we're, we've kind of, we're looking at the, the third one, which is, um, oh no, we're looking at the, uh, yeah, the third one. The extent to which environmental effects are subject to mitigation by ongoing public regulatory authority provided that the RGU may rely only on mitigation measures that are specific and can reasonably be expected to be effective. That, the finding is, I don't know if it's a finding or a, a, that, the, um, the RGU or the, the county can put additional conditions.
According to the EQV.
Well, not according to the EQV, according to, um.
Minnesota State.
No, just, just for what we deem necessary, what the county deems necessary on the interim, on the interim use permit.
So you're saying the county, the RGU can put.
We can put additional conditions.
Yeah, additional conditions.
To, to, um, to address the issues of dust, noise.
You could probably just add on to your fact number four.
Yeah, I was, well, that's just on dust control. Um, so this would be all in general, essentially, the RGU can put on additional conditions as, as requested, or as, no.
Not as deemed necessary to address, um, issues of environmental impact. Yeah. I think it's important somewhere that we put those conditions have to be measurable. We have to be able to measure, we can't just put a condition. Right. A measurable condition.
Um, there.
Instead of additional, put measurable, or additional measurable conditions like Lindsey stated.
Yeah. You put it, alright, so the, the next, the last one is the RGU can put additional measurable conditions as deemed necessary to address issues of environmental impact.
Does, do, do any of these findings address the, um, the multiple requests for additional archaeological study and those types, I mean, is that generally what this ones, they've been included in this? You know, there's, there was multiple requests for additional research?
But I don't think, there's, so yeah, I guess the fact would be that there are requests. Um, we can address those requests during the expand, uh, after the EAW is, and the EAW, or after this process is finished. Would you actually, would you want those in, would you want that statement in the findings? I don't think, I don't think that would be a finding.
Would they be addressed as conditions, or how would we address them?
Yes, yeah.
So, so, it would, it would be included in number ten then?
Yeah, yeah, so these aren't conditions themselves, they're just, they're just findings that we base our.
But those, those additional measurable conditions that we could put on interim permit could include additional studies of whatever.
Correct, monitoring studies.
Modern studies or archaeological studies or.
Correct, yeah. Would anyone else like to add a, a finding?
Or just a new finding?
My next couple of findings. And it, it. I don't know if it. Um, a finding would be that, maybe we have that, you have, you've mentioned some stuff with the DNR, but, um, other, other state agencies have requirements that are necessary for the, um, project to continue.
Yeah, and it's, and that's just a normal condition that we have under all, all of our permits is that they have to.
But I think of, of, a finding is that there are other state agencies that will be addressing some of the questions that came up in the EAW. NPCA with air quality, I mean, there's something. NPCA and CNR.
And, yep, and even from earlier today, Tom was saying he's working with the NPCA, and while I, I guess I was in water monitoring, but um, it kinda goes the same way with, with air quality. So I'd, um, just to reiterate what, um, say that one more time, Phil, there are other state agencies that will, that are, will have to be involved in the approval of this expansion.
It will be involved, take the half on it.
Yeah.
Half two can come on.
Yeah.
You can just start with state agencies. Or other. State agencies as well, so you kind of that, the open-ended.
Other state agencies.
Figure that out a two. As we, you know, we've been changing it on the goal here, so.
That's okay.
That's just write things down and screw it up.
Yeah, so, so far we have eleven findings, if, um.
When, when, uh, NCTU recommends further study, what do you guys do with that suggestion from NCTU? From MPM?
In my opinion, I think the archaeological study is sufficient. Um, I think a lot of the comment of, uh, additional study is leaning more towards the monitoring piece. And the additional, uh, consultation that was requested to happen prior to the study does not change the results of the study itself.
You, you, do you feel or not that they, they thought more archaeological study on that area would be, um, helpful or impactful to what they might find, or, or that?
I think we blanketed the area well enough to, uh, uh, depth. That would be a depth where no human has stepped foot. So I'm not sure what a further study would look like outside of the monitoring.
Uh, how about a, you know, I know they stated their, their pedestrian survey was done when, you know, their soybeans were up like this, whatever, you know, they couldn't, they couldn't see very little of ground surface. So, you know, as they did their, their dig, they're basically were just that area of impact and they couldn't really see anything surrounding it. So between the, the shovel tests, I think they were, um, five meters apart, five meters apart.
Five meters, a hundred and ninety-five shovel tests.
But between those five meters, which is fifteen feet, you know, if there's something on the surface that they didn't see.
I'd argue that the ground's been tillowed for how many years?
But I'm not sure that, from what I understand from past, um, meetings, that tillage doesn't necessarily impact the, the findings of archaeological, you know, that's why in a farm field, you'll find some, you know, an, an artifact out there and the field's been farmed for a hundred and fifty years. You know, just because it's had tillage on it, doesn't mean that there's not something out there. Because you're not, you're not out there walking every square inch, you know, you have a twenty or thirty or forty or fifty foot implement, so you're just going every, you know, twenty, thirty, forty feet. And you're up in, you know, on a tractor, you're not on foot, you know, walking back, you know, you are occasionally on foot out there, but you're not walking every square inch back and forth, so. So you're seeing, you know, just what you see as you go by five, six, seven miles an hour, and it's not a lot that you can see when you're doing that, so. You know, just because it's been tilled doesn't mean that they might not find other things, and, you know, I'm just talking about a pedestrian, not more digging, but just a pedestrian walkover, which they were, weren't really able to do in their phase one. And they, and I think they talked with Shippo about, you know, that they're all aware of how that happened because of the timing and that, but um, if a, if a, you know, just completing that, the spring would be beneficial. I know you guys don't want them to find anything out there, but.
That's, that's something. Good direction for you guys on.
And so just as the Director of Archaeology, which I do regulate and read and review reports for the, for the state, um, multiple agencies commented that, you know, that the archaeological survey was inadequate, that have the responsibility for reviewing archaeological projects. So the finding that, um, I think all agencies came across, I think it might be worth having a conversation with the Office of State Archaeologists to kind of understand, um, but I also, one of the things I wanted to mention is that when we were talking about those measurable outcomes, which yes, we, we actually told very strictly to this, there's actually two manuals for the state of Minnesota, one that Shippo, um, reviews and, um, reads by, and one that OSA reads by as well, too. So there are actually, um, there are actually manuals out there that are the guidelines for archaeologists to follow, and what they're, what they're finding, what they're trying to say through this whole public comment period, is that they found out that they did not need the standards for archaeological projects that they see. So that's, those manuals that we, um, that you can actually see and read and available online to review.
When you, when you reference, several times during the meeting, you referenced the DNR. Who are you specifically referring to? Are you referring to an office, a person?
I, I think what, what, um, what the letter from the DNR, um, it came from the New Ulm office. And the, the person who, who responded with the letter that I, the one that I reported at least was Haley Brown, the Regional Environmental Assessment Ecologist, that's who the information that I read was from.
Okay.
Um, the, the other information with the Calcarius Fan, I think, um, Alex said there's a specific person or a group that deals with that, is that what you?
Yeah, I was.
Found there? So, but, but what I was going through, and I think the response that came to the EAW came from the New Ulm DNR office?
There's, I mean, there's a, there's multiple offices involved, but response came specifically from the the New Ulm office, there it is. Um, those were CC'd on this comment letter.
Yeah, I didn't cover those off.
Yeah, were three, um, Assistant Regional Manager, Southern District Manager were from New Ulm, area hydrologist of that area who was from Ankato. Um, and then everyone else is from, uh, the New Ulm office, so it was, it would have been New Ulm mainly and then Mankato as well. Or would be involved.
Thank you.
Then two, just to go back to NCTU's report, they specifically said and recommended additional work, Shippo commented and agreed on. Also to say that it was sufficient is just, I believe accurate.
So I have eleven findings that, uh, we've come up with so far. Would we like to add any more or discusing? Then we can base our decision on those findings.
One thing I think about in point number seven is the only option was to move north. You know, yes and no, um, I, what I'm gonna say is that the option to move north wasn't without investigation. And so in response to the Lower Sioux and the people that are, um, you know, concerned for that process, I think it was done in a way that was, you know, respectful, it wasn't as thorough as we would have expected and as Phil thought. We thought there would be way more conversations beforehand, but I think that the area, as we find it, um, isn't heavily filled with artifacts. And of course, you can always question more, but respectively speaking, in the area as a whole, it's.
The most suitable, is that what you're?
That would be there, I would say.
Yeah, 'cause the, the other option they had was to go down, they had that option to go down, which.
Well, we can go south towards the river also, but then we're getting closer to the artifacts.
Traditionally, artifacts would.
Yeah, and I don't know what the.
A fifty-foot buffer is what we gotta stay.
That's what the memorandum of understanding was.
So I always felt that it was better to move north and stay away from the artifacts and continue to let the tribes come in and do their ceremonies at that area rather than mining all around it and disturbing.
I know we've been discussing should it be walked area or whatever, I was trying to make a little lighthearted and say the county would pay for games, honey, it's all right. Make sure, like to go walk the ten acres, I'm a little bit serious on that, but try to at least put a little less on, but I, I keep coming back a little bit as often as that, I come back to the you know, glacial tilt, glacial tilt tells me it got put there when the glaciers, glaciers receded. And then I, I keep going back and I actually looked at that chart of the hundred and ninety-five shovel tests that we did every five meters, five yards, it was going to fall apart, and I'm like, sitting here thinking like, more, the only you can do is dig deeper. And it doesn't even make any sense. So.
And the electric, electrical resistivity testing that we completed through the area, I mean, it clearly validates what we see on the highway wall. I mean, just that test, you're looking at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I know there's some other tests in there that I was intrigued by and some graphs and stuff, but like.
Yeah, but those tests and that that data was added without amending the EAW. And so all that information needs to be reviewed in a public comment, and they have to amend the A W for that. And it shouldn't be admissible in your decisions.
Which which comments, David?
All the data, they're looking at the, they did the seventy-eight page comments, and then they added the field resistivity testing. And then the AVP. So that's information that should have been included or amended into the EAW and then reopened for public comment. Just that information alone. And that didn't happen. And that shouldn't be included in your decisions or facts of finding. Because that procedure wasn't followed.
I'm trying to understand fully. I just a little bit lost on what I'm sorry, but I just, I know, I know I should, I spent so much time looking at this and I should like, it should just pop out at me, but it's not. So, okay.
So all this information that like this, the seventy-eight page is should have been included in the original EAW. That's the information that we should have seen. I think there's still more that's missing, right? Like the BUSHIT and stuff like that. That's information that should have been provided to, you know, for a, for a public comment. So if there's more information being come to light that they're providing, I guess our concern is where and when can we have that public comment period? Because that's data should have been included in the EAW.
So the 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 comments to the questions, the public, the public questions that were commented on, those were just comments related to the EAW, but
As a study, yeah.
But but you're saying there's additional information in that?
Provided the like the assessing information and other other information, I think there was more information. And the additional, the additional letter that came out. That's information that should have been included in the EAW originally. And so like, that's, that's, I think, a concern that we have in addition to some other concerns about like, when will there be an additional comment, like, you know, an additional comment period related to that? Because this is new information that whenever the original comment period happened, that that wasn't available. So when does that happen, I guess, as part of the process? Because it is new information. And I think even even so with the archaeology, too, there was new information that NSETU provided, including that inadvertent discoveries plan, right, and monitoring plan. So that's all of new information that gets added to to this process. And when, when does a public comment period happen related to that?
Initially, I'm going to say I don't know, but we're going to.
We'd have to discuss with the EQB on that. My first thoughts are we would just pull that information out and then just base it, base our decisions strictly off of the NSETU's response or the the person that did the the phase one response and responses that MPM and ISG had. The first study, so they're talking about like CUP does control plan. Well, actually, CUP does control plan. That was that kind of stuff that that's just straight up involved in the conditions and the conditionally used permit. So that's already in there. But the overburden investigation, the seismograph data, that kind of stuff. My my first thoughts are we would, we would have to pull that out and not base our, our findings off that. It's called out of speech.
Yeah, it's in the blue header.
So there's.
So I guess I'm a bit confused because I'm looking at the fifty-five page report.
Seventy-eight. Seventy-eight page report.
I'm looking at the original.
Original EAW?
Your original report. The EAW.
She, they're, they're talking about the response to the comments after the public, after the public comment period was closed. And we got that seventy-eight page response.
That a few times.
So she's talking about the extra data that they came, that came with it as far as the seismograph data, the overburden investigation, those extra things that they put in there that weren't originally part of the EAW.
So I can't use the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four original report on the NSETU?
I think you should be able to, because that was, that that NSETU report was part of the EAW, the phase one survey.
The information we're talking about is in that report.
Yep. And they're, they're, they're talking about the overburden, overburden and the seismograph data and the the dose control plan was already part of the that was already part of the conditionally used permit. But I would, I would.
You're right. Well, that was not included here, the the artifact and the shovel tests. Some of that information I remember was included, some was not.
So we're, I would, I would say we would leave that, leave those facts out of it as far as our decision. And take away those two those, those two or three extra pieces of information that were not that were. Versus are.
That info included in your findings effect, but I think that's a bit of a slippery slope being that this
Not just the response.
I don't have data on the overburden investigation, and it was included, but if it was completed before and referenced, I don't know if it, it obviously is not included in the A W stuff. We're not including it, but.
I'm not going, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not, we're basing our find, we're basing our decision off the findings.
EAW had overburden language, if I remember.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll, I'll respond to the, I'll have the EQB.
Because there, there was a question on. Nick, can you help? You're just on the, on the, as you went through the, you know, the responses, were there questions about the overburden that you responded to? It seems to me I read questions about the eight, the eight-foot roughly overburden on the ten-acre site. I know it's a lot to, that you looked at, too, and maybe you don't recall all that either, but.
I think some of that information regarding the overburden was presented following some of the conversations that we had during the meetings during the comment period. So that's why we wanted to include it in the response, like as much additional data as we had available to us, even though it might not have been included in the original EAW document itself. I don't know if someone was referencing the EAW or not, or, but it was basically just the document. The data that was available to MPM.
Tom, I'd love just to make a comment on the seismograph, what we, you know, what we do. It's important really to suggest that there's not out crops near the surface. It's part of, I and that's not the only concern. You know, there is a concern about there being archaic floors there. Another in that eight feet, there can be other things in there. So it says it's almost a little bit irrelevant. However, group on the Red Rock Ridge group, we're looking at that and looking at that suggesting, we don't know whether that seismograph study was as complete as it should be. I will say that. However, I don't know that it's really that important. You understand what I'm saying? But you know, I, I'm still dubious that it is actually a constant in book. But however, that's just one part of it. It's not just petaliers that are concerned, but actual archaeological sites that are deeply buried, which are on the Red Rock Ridge. And the soils that we see, and again, the report we've all seen doesn't convince us as archaeologists. And every archaeologist I've talked to, for every agency has looked at that report, said it's in it. We don't, that's why we're asking for the soils. Because you're, we're, we're not convinced as archaeologists under doing best practice that we have concluded that that soil is that shallow and and just what they're structured, what they're saying. So it's, you know, it's kind of a unpointed.
If if we understand that it was a phase one, a phase one survey, I think there were some other phase one archaeological investigation. And I suppose there's, there, we could look up what the, what the parameters are of that. Is it just, is that phase one archaeological investigation, is that kind of the most basic survey you can do? Is, I mean, that's just, it's, it's a starting point? And so if you found something, you continue on to the next thing, but since they didn't find anything, they said it was, you know, that's, oh, well, I guess NSETU recommended further investigation. So.
And that's why everybody's ready. And you know, nobody, nobody here, I don't think, here tries to stop for it. We're only asking you to do the process as it's supposed to be.
Well, right, I think, I think I'm going to speak for myself. I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board, but I want to work with the guys at the quarry to do a survey and not go down the road of an EIS, because I know an EIS is going to be, you know, six figures probably or more. You know, it's going to be expensive or the, the, an additional survey is going to be, you know, pennies on that. And the, the guys who did the phase one survey, they said we should be doing more. We didn't, you know, we did what we, we did what we were required to do. And that's what we did. I mean, they, they met the, the requirement of a phase one survey, okay? And they found something. They weren't happy with the conclusion, though. They, they feel like they should, there should be more studied on there. That's what NSETU, the guys who did the phase one survey said. And I know early on it was like, well, those, those guys didn't know what they were doing or whatever. And looking at Craig Pika, I think that was his name, you know, at his, at his background and stuff, I think he's a qualified person to do the phase one survey, to continue doing more. Maybe he's the guy, too. I don't know. But just to say that they did the minimum, they want us to do more, but we're saying that's all we need to do. I'm not sure that how we, can, can we, can we require an additional look at this as a condition?
I don't, I don't think we can even get into it right now. We're just making a decision based on what we have here, the findings of fact.
I mean, is that a condition we could have?
They, I, I think MPM also has to agree with the conditions that we have set. And if they don't agree, we, we can.
That doesn't mean we have to take it away.
Correct. But I think we can definitely meet in the middle when it comes to the interim permit, reviewing the interim permits and the amount of conditions that we need to set.
Because we're, I think.
We can set.
What our discussion is, what, what.
They have to be agreeable.
Yeah, what our discussion has gone to is we're, we're not, we're, we're looking at not requiring an EIS. But we're still looking at ways to be responsible to all the parties involved and looking at, at the, the site involved. But without going to an EIS, which is beneficial, especially to the proposer, to MPM. It's most beneficial to them not to do EIS versus anyone else, you know, anyone else in the room back there behind you guys. So what, you know, what, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, if, if you guys are willing to work a little bit with the county board to, to do one more, one more survey to see what, and then, and then see what that says. And if, if that survey comes back, we need to do another survey, then you would continue down that road until the, the archaeological community is satisfied that that property is, you know, mineable.
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to work one of those gas stops, so.
That's the whole discussion we had earlier. Where is that? Phase one, phase two.
Right, but when, for, I understand. I agree with Ellis. I think that's probably an irrelevant discussion for today.
The condition, the commotion here, what do we have to do to finish the process? But if we go down that road, that fork or whatever you want to call it, and that's why I was asking, and somebody needs to provide the planning commission a very detailed, okay, here's, here's what it is, and here are the benchmarks, the criteria, there's everything that that occurs very specifically, very measurable and very specific as to what those are. Because, yeah, okay, so if we do phase two or whatever, an archaeological study or whatever the criteria are for that, we find nothing, then are we done? That's, that's my concern. You know, keep on dragging it on out.
And down your own.
Yeah, I know. If you find something, that's why I asked the question about mining and whatever. It's like, okay, what do you have? So.
If we work with another requirement down the path, it would, you know, we would have to then regulate it at that point beyond what the state does. And I don't think we should overstep the state in that. I think we need to really work in our own area around the, too many, you know, changes of rules.
Is it okay if they have somebody out there on their bush under? What more can you ask?
And we can discuss that more.
Right, yeah.
At another date.
They're now putting dirt tomorrow, so it's.
Right. I mean, to.
Is there all conditions? Jim, for.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, like back to that, there is that manual for OSA, and I think that's where I would make that threshold is to engage OSA. Hey, what is that threshold? So they're not, it's not continuously ticking down and because they have a manual. That manual sets the standards of what is a phase one, what is a phase two, what is a phase three? It has to be like last, I would, I would just engage with the Office of State Archaeologists directly as the county to kind of ask that question to the state archaeologists. What is that threshold? And making sure that it's not a constant, like a constant game.
Yeah, you could ask me, can we, can we just stop now and just let it, you know, let it proceed where we're at? Or do we, you know, now, Tom?
I was going to say, Amanda did tell me that she has sent a letter to NSETU with exactly what you're asking for. NSETU has received that. You know, she went through and said, this is what you need to do to complete this survey by the standards. And NSETU has, has that. And the letters you will receive, David, I'm sure will be the same exact thing. They're going to be told exactly what needs to happen. It's not going to be something that just goes on and on and on. And the, you know, the whole, the phase one issue committee, you look for at presence of, absent those sites. And there are better people than me to tell you. The second one is if you need to deny it to a site, the more. And a phase three is when you need to go in and completely remove a site or completely invest in a site because they're going to dig it up with a coin, that if there was. And that's how those work. But go with what Amanda and what David says. They are, they have laid it out for you. And as Jim says, the manual lays it out, what you need to do to complete that process.
So what, whatever here you say, Tom, is that the further studies, it, it takes a little more time, but in the end, it doesn't say you can't foray here. It just does, you just, we just want to investigate, and if there is something there, we want to be able to remove it.
Right, right. We're going to stop some of that.
They're not, they're not saying we're, we're going to put another circle around that piece and you can't touch it. We're going to, we just want the ability to remove it.
Right. Right.
Okay.
It has a high potential for being, from an archaeological perspective, and also from an indigenous perspective. There is a high potential for there, because of the nature of the area, because of the nature of, of Jucker Petro's being there, and the whole Red Rock Bridge. There is a high potential for there to be a site that would be a site where people stay, for example, to give you the example. There could be an ancient campsite there, or one of the, you know, sacred places like this avenue. There are places that you go first prepared. There may be a preparation site there. And, and further. You know, I'm not seeing a, you know, some further shovel tests. By the way, the shovel test were fifteen meters apart, not five. They only went to five when they got near that one, where they found the plate. So, you know, um, I, I really think it needs a real, you, you really need somebody to go through, like, why hasn't somebody done that the last? Few months? They've done it all when, somebody could walk, you know. Just to make sure. But the other thing, look at the soils, see what's there. Do we have some deep soils? Do we have some deep occupation? Uh, soils, and that's pretty much, that's not a big deal. And, and in the end, you know. I don't like to see this quarry go on. I think it's a positive thing, but you're gonna have to look at the water, you're gonna have to look at the air, you're gonna have to look at the air, yeah. You can't just do the minimal. This is too important, you know, a- a- as you said, Bill. This is, it's major. The Red Rock Bridge is a major cultural site for indigenous people from all over the country. It's pretty manic. It is at the level of the pyramids. It's at the level of, of stonings or any other site in the world. Is that important? And we are just beginning to understand it. And, and this stuff is precious. This is precious stuff to the Dakota community and to all the indigenous community. This is some of the last vestiges of knowledge, information of who they are. The last of it there. And so we can't be frivolous enough.
Uh, I'd like to think of it as it's important to my neighbor.
Right.
That's what I, you know. Important to my neighbor. I can, I can say they're a community over this or that, but I, I wanna feel that it's my neighbor, and that's who I'm, you know, working with here, so.
It's what we're good at, isn't it, aren't we, to love our neighbor?
I would, I would recommend make a motion based off of the findings of facts. Um, the last finding I put is the state office of state archaeology. I don't know. Before we make a motion, um, does this make sense? The office of state archaeology has a set of standards for surveys.
It's on units.
Yeah.
Me that ties more of the potential conditions that we put on it when we do it.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. That's actually, well, now that I mentioned, now that I think about it, that wasn't in the E A W. We're not, the, the office of state archaeology. We then, we didn't get that quote out of the E A W, but that will be. That will be a part of the conditions from the future.
The. Well, if it's, if it's in the comments, though, it's part of the record.
Correct, is it in the comments?
The, what, what was the comment of the?
The state office of archaeology has a certain set of standards.
Oh.
Um, that are, that surveys have to go through.
That stated at the front of the institute survey.
I don't know.
Are you up? I think we're following this.
Yeah, not really representing that.
No.
At all, I mean, the comments.
No, that was a comment that was made today, so I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna leave that out of the findings. But, um, so we, we have the eleven findings. I, I'd recommend a motion be made and a vote upon what. What, uh, this, the decision, so.
O S A guidelines are referenced in the institute comic response letter, if that matters.
The one.
It references the shipboat guidance and the O S A guidelines. They're both are mentioned in there.
As a reference.
Right.
So they are referenced in.
Would you want that?
I think, I think as a, as a finding. Would be. To have in there something that was referenced, something that.
The guidelines for, uh, phase one survey are referenced.
Um, but it's not, it's not in the context, it's referenced as, as in these are the references for everything.
Correct.
So anything that was any of those, I'll say thousands of pages of unread references. Should be included here.
Is it going to affect your, is it going to affect your decision on the need for an E I S? Yes or no?
I'm like, no.
Okay, I will even.
Not my opinion.
I don't think that will affect either, in my opinion. Um, I wanna keep it at eleven for now. What? What do you think here?
Does anyone else have any other comments they wanna make before entertaining a motion? Was that entertaining a motion to? Not gonna state it, however, someone wants to state it.
What's the format?
We entertain the motion that this be sufficient. This E A W would be sufficient or inefficient and would require an E I S or would not require an E I S.
And then the format would be develop a resolution for the county board to. Come to the conclusion, whatever, you know. The, the.
Findings will be in the resolution.
Correct, yep. The findings will be in the resolution.
Yeah. So we, I don't think we need to develop the resolution. We just need to develop the motion. To, to state the resolution one way or the other. That makes sense?
Yes.
Someone wanna make a motion? Someone needs to make a motion.
Correctly worded.
Worded?
Yeah, worded, yeah.
Okay. Do you, do you think the E A W is sufficient?
I, I'll make the motion that the E A W is efficient upon these findings of facts.
Sufficient upon the findings of facts.
And that resolution will be.
Okay.
Developed to state that.
Yeah, and resolution, you develop, state that, right, yeah.
I'll second.
Wordsmith that for us anyway.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
So the E A W is sufficient. Is sufficient upon.
On finding.
Upon the findings of facts. Findings of fact. And a resolution will be made.
To, um.
To have final approval by the board.
By the county, county board commissioners.
The resolution will be made.
Be developed, you know. Thank Josh.
I was trying to spit out House one.
By the county, uh, Cottonwood County Board of Commissioners. Okay, so you.
So read it back.
Read, read it back.
We'll say officially.
Please.
Geez, you think I can read my own writing?
Profoundness.
E A W is sufficient upon findings of fact. The resolution will be made to have final approval by the Cottonwood County Board of Commissioners.
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 That, right, Mike?
Correct, yeah. Mike, Mike said that, and then Heidi seconded.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Heidi. The, uh, the motion. Is there discussion?
I'd vote individually, and then you would be last as the chair.
The discussion.
I would say we covered our bases. We made sure we addressed everything. At least, I think it's a. Good move.
Okay. Any further discussion? And, uh, someone can call for a division of the house if they're not satisfied with how we vote, or do you want them to record it?
What's that? I would just.
I would just say all on paper, say aye.
Okay, yeah, we do that. All favor. Aye.
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 All's. Motion carries.
That, that concludes the open meeting.
Thank you all for coming today.
It's true.
Hope no one's totally satisfied with the way this turned out.